All right, six o'clock, we're gonna call the meeting to order. I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll adopt the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Tim and John.
I feel like I'm at a Yankees game.
So, the mission of the St. James R1 School District is to empower students through caring relationships and community partnerships. We're gonna stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I don't see a fight. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna share good things. Does anybody have anything good to share?
Good things. Week, we're gonna have a chance to get back in school. It's supposed to warm up this weekend. I think we'll be in a good spot.
You didn't quarantine anybody this week?
That's correct. I'm looking forward to not sending out a message this weekend for the quarantine, so we'll see.
Board recognition, so I'm gonna turn this over to Dr. Johnson.
Every year, our board members do, in various over 600. But you know. Like for you. Service.
Thank you.
St. James School District, so thank you for all that you do.
Awesome.
Thank you very much. I believe there is also a. Took a lot of fun developing that, thank you for organizing that. Had some pre-school personalized, thank you so much, I think it's all Fisher's.
Yes, he's gonna freak out.
Pretty cool stuff, so there's a lot of people that appreciate you guys.
Any statements from patrons? Dr. Johnson, you're in the seat.
We have no statements from page.
Okay, it says here that Branco and Dake Wells will be presenting a project update. I assume they're on Zoom?
Eric and/or Brandon, are you guys on?
This is Brandon. Yep, I'm on. I'll let Eric take the lead.
Okay, so just a quick update. We'll go through here. Everything at the new school has been turned over to the school except for the band room and the auditorium. There was a little issue with the ceiling in the band room. It's being rectified. This will be no cost to the school. This is where the construction manager at Risk Park comes in. Branco's making sure that that's all taken care of. And everything's good to go on that, and it should be completed by the end of next week. So that should be ready after that. The auditorium, we're waiting on some lights that were on back order for the stairs, which the seating's not there yet, but that's a school provided item. The seating hasn't been installed, but we are waiting on some lights that were on back order. They were supposed to be here this week, and I've been on them trying to get an update on where those are at. Nobody can seem to get an update on that, but they should be in here sometime this week. So hopefully tomorrow, they guaranteed them this week, and then as soon as those are in, they'll get them installed. It'll take them three or four days to install them, and then the flooring contractor will come in and put the carpet on the stairs. Aside from that, everything else in the auditorium is done. They're waiting on some audio/video stuff to be installed. And I think they've been contacted and should be there to get that done relatively quickly. But everything's looking good, and the elevator's all functionable. We have received the occupancy permit from the city. I think all the classrooms are ready to go on the first floor, second floor. They're all set up, ready to go. I think this week of not having school with the weather has allowed Wes's crew to get all that stuff set up. I know today they were waxing the floors in the atrium area. And really, aside from that, all we have left is there's a few remaining punch items that are being handled by the subcontractors, and those will not interfere with school activities whatsoever. All the subcontractors have been informed that if their items are not taken care of, they need to be taken care of in hours that will not affect the student's learning whatsoever. So those will be done after hours, evenings, weekends, whatever they gotta do. And then there's nothing on there that's major. It's just little piddly stuff, I guess you could say, that needs to be rectified.
Any questions for Eric? Brandon, do you have anything?
No, we've done our walkthrough, and we've provided the certificate of substantial completion. So I think we're just waiting for the punch list items to get taken care of. And yeah, we're in agreement with everything Eric talked about as far as what needs to be done. And so we're just monitoring that and helping as needed.
My only question, I guess it's probably more to you. So the, once the lights are in, we can do the seats, like start ordering, or do we have to?
We've already ordered those seats, and we just got emailed this afternoon that the seats are gonna be shipped in next week, they say? Yeah. So that's actually a lot earlier than what we thought. We originally thought it was gonna be possibly April, so we're excited about that. So they're thinking that they're gonna be able to get it installed by the end of March, everything in with the Heartland seating.
Yeah, the flooring's not holding up the seating people at all. So the lights have to be in before they can put the carpet on the stairs. The lights have some kind of a nosing built into them, so that has to be put in first. And the reason, they were, they had a back order, and then they're all custom-made lights. They all have to be measured individually and then installed, but they should be there. I'm hoping they're there either today or very first part of next week. And then the flooring guys, I mean, they'll have that done in one or two days tops, the flooring installed on them. It's just carpet that goes down the runners where the stairs are.
So I'm assuming the fire door in the bathrooms is completed?
Yes, ma'am.
When we get done here today, the lights are on, so we can just go do a quick walkthrough. You'll be pretty excited to see the progress.
I think everything's looking good. I think you got a compliment about it today, didn't you, Merlin?
What's that, Eric?
I think you received a compliment about how, about that today, didn't you?
Yeah, we had a gentleman from Hilliard came in for the first time, and he was very complimentary in talking about how excited it would be to be part of this community and be a student in the school. And he was really excited and very complimentary of us renovating the building instead of tearing down and building new. Tina, you asked a question. What did you ask?
I just said that I think the community would be very excited to see another Merlin Johnson walkthrough of the classrooms. I know the auditorium and band room will come later, but since we're actually putting kids in, I would like to see something go out. Parents can see where their kids are going.
We can do that, and then at the end, we'll do a celebratory ribbon-cutting video, so. I don't wanna talk anymore tonight. I think, I think they don't have to really hear us right now, because this isn't, this isn't good.
Shalina, can you hear me? Nod yes if you can. Shalina, give me a thumbs up if you can hear me. Shalina, if you want to talk, you have to raise your hand, okay?
Okay, I can't hear everything, but I heard that. I can't hear everything, but I heard John say, if you can hear me, give me a thumbs up.
And not only that, but she's got her closed. We gotta be able to see her. Yeah, that's true.
Okay, so I think Eric and Brandon, thank you for the update. I don't think there are any more questions. No? Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, so the next thing, we have Performance Services, who did a district-wide indoor air quality assessment, and they've come back with some results and potential upgrades for us. And I, is he on there to give a presentation?
Yes, Sterling should be on there. Sterling?
Yep, I'm here, and I've got a couple of people with me, Robert Mott, who's our operations director. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, and Brian Holdmeyer, who's our lead engineer, who led the project. And Brian's gonna be steering the PowerPoint, so if, I don't know, Brian, if you wanna go ahead and share that, if you have access.
Am I allowed to share? It says it's disabled.
Brent, can you allow him to share his screen?
Okay, I'll go ahead and get started. We've made a few visits to St. James School District, primarily, we've been all three buildings, and we're gonna talk about those today. Brian Holdmeyer and Chris Thorne, two of our lead engineers, were with us, and Dr. Johnson and Wes kinda led the tour. And so we've spent quite a bit of time in the buildings. We've spent some time in the high school, and we had a good visit with the middle school, but extensively, we focused on the elementary. We know you're, you guys have a great project at the high school, and I think the administration felt that the elementary school is the building that's probably the biggest target. And you'll see that our findings kind of reflected that. So we would have loved to have been there in person today, but while you guys did not have COVID issues, contact tracing kinda got the better of us, so, so we couldn't be there in person today, but we're sure we'll be with you in the weeks to come. So Brian, why don't you go ahead and show the next slide? And I'm gonna go through two or three slides, just a little bit about our company. We've been in, active in Missouri for about seven years, but we've been around a lot. And we really focused on energy savings projects and building upgrades, and we've done quite a few in our history. You can go ahead and roll to the next one, Brian. So today, there's a couple of things we wanna focus on, indoor air quality assessment. And the reason we're focusing on that, obviously, is COVID-19. This has been an issue for buildings, building operations for 50 years, but COVID-19 has really made us focus on our indoor air quality and our indoor air environment. And so we are doing this for school districts across the state, helping them assess their air quality and really target upgrades. And that's primarily what some of the funding in the COVID-19 and the CARES Act is targeting. And then, as I said, primarily, we targeted the Lucy Wortham James Building, and we're gonna talk about that one particularly a little bit in depth. So when we say air quality, these are the elements of indoor air quality that we're assessing. So in the old days, when I went to school, we did not focus on that. We focused on temperature. And if we got the building hot enough, we opened the windows, and we really didn't stress air exchanges, air filtration, humidity. That was not a big concern. But in today's buildings, we are asking a lot more of our buildings. And your new building, your new addition and renovation has all of these capabilities, but a lot of sections in the elementary school are, were built in the 60s and the 80s, when some of this, the focus was not as, was not as concentrated on air quality. So these are just some of the things that we're gonna, we were assessing when we made the visit. On our next slide, we talk about some of the things that we focus on in addition to temperature, humidity, and CO2 levels. We're also looking at lighting and classroom lighting, and you're gonna see some pictures of some of the classrooms in your buildings where the classroom lighting is not meets today's standards. With a lot of technology in the rooms, we typically like to see a lower light level than in some of the rooms that you have. Higher light levels can lead to headaches and eye strain, and additionally have a negative impact on learning. So that's kind of what we're gonna look at, and Brian's gonna walk you through the three buildings, and he's gonna talk about these measures in the elementary, the middle school, and the high school, because these are the, these are the things that we assessed. Are there any questions about those? Okay, well, Brian, why don't we go through the elementary school? Let's start with that. So let me ask a question, though. Does, do you guys have this on your computer, or can you see this screen in the detail? Because it's kind of small.
Yes, sir, we can see it.
Okay, okay. Go ahead, Brian.
All right, so Sterling mentioned, back in November, we met with Dr. Johnson and Mr. DeLuca to talk about indoor air quality, and we kinda walked around all three of the school buildings. We started in the elementary. We started in the new early childhood center. So that's, this box up here, there wasn't a floor plan of that yet, so it's just kind of out here in space. But so let me start off by giving kind of a reference point for why we measure CO2. CO2 is something that we can easily measure, and it's a good metric to determine how often the air in the room is getting changed over, and if outside air is diffusing into the air to help reduce the levels of CO2 that all the occupants produce. So typically, we like to see below 1,000 parts per million, or PPM, of CO2 in the classroom spaces. So on this day in November, outside, there was 423 PPM. We like to get a baseline of just what the outside air CO2 concentration is. It was 75.
In the green box.
Yep. Yep, so it was 75 degrees outside, so it was a pretty mild day, which kind of will lead into why there's some variability in some of this. Moreover, in the high school, we noticed that some of the teachers had their windows open. So on mild days like that, operating the windows and opening them up to get in fresh air can help reduce those numbers. But on cold days like we've had recently, or extreme hot days, it's not really an option, so CO2 levels can start to climb. So as you look kind of generally over the building, for the most part, it's over 1,000. In some cases, it was over 2,000. So generally, between 1,000 and 2,000 PPM, you can start to feel, start getting effects of drowsiness. The air starts to feel stuffy, and then when you start to get above 2,000 parts per million, you can start getting other physical effects like migraines or headaches, stuff like that. So if we walked around the elementary school, we picked out classrooms. Some of them we picked out were empty classrooms that a class had just left. We picked some where there were still students in there. We set our device in there and came back 15 minutes later. So that's kind of another factor that can lead to the variability in the PPM numbers across the building. And then the last thing that could lead to the variability is the units themselves that are serving it, and we'll kinda talk about that a little bit later. Before I go on to the next school, does anyone have any questions about the elementary and the values?
And so let's talk about rooms nine and 18 in the bottom left-hand corner, Brian. So those were the rooms with classroom furnaces in them? Where they have a residential-style furnace with a split system outside? And they don't have the capability of supplying indoor air.
Correct.
And then some of the units on the roof, I don't know, Brian, you might know better, they do have the capability. They just don't, do not, no longer function. Do you know which ones?
Yeah, yeah, we'll kinda show that on a later slide. I'll kinda discuss that.
Okay. All right.
So if we move on from there and go to the middle school, so the system that's at the middle school, so primarily at the elementary school, you have, like Sterling mentioned, furnaces with split AC units, rooftop package units, for the most part, to condition the spaces and bring in outside air if they have the capability. At the middle school, you have a more sophisticated system of water-source heat pumps, and you actually have dedicated outside air units that their sole purpose is to bring in and condition and provide outside air to all the classroom spaces. So as we walked around the middle school, it was no surprise that most of the CO2 levels were about what we would expect for a building that has a dedicated system to bring in and condition outside air. So I would say this is a good example of where you would wanna be for all of your buildings. The highest one here was room 13, 871, and even that's still well within range. So then if we move on to the high school, so the high school is kind of limited. We stayed away from the renovated area. Back in November, there was still construction going on, so we focused just on the older part of the building and just took a few spot readings. And it was similar story to the middle school. All the readings were above 1,000 with some approaching 2,000, or in Classroom 104's case, 200 PPM above 2,000. So again, here on the spaces that we looked at, it's mostly packaged rooftop equipment or furnace with split AC system. Any questions before I kinda move on to the next? So the other thing we did, in addition to the indoor air quality, is we tried to get a handle on your guys' utility spend. For a small school district, I would say this is a big task for you guys. You guys have a multitude of electric and gas meters and water meters for the limited amount of buildings that you have. And we learned from Mr. DeLuca that the gas meters have actually become a hot topic, because the city has recently started charging meter fees per month, per meter. I think it's $45. So that was another thing that we tried to look at, if there was a way at the elementary school to consolidate gas meters to get you down to one and try to eliminate some of those meter charges. So what we look at as far as utility analysis, when we look at buildings, is we kinda break it down into these metrics down here. EUI is your energy use index. ECI is energy cost index. So you can see that the middle school is your most expensive dollar per square foot, which makes sense because that's the building that's bringing in the fresh air and providing it to the classrooms. And conditioning outside air is one of the most expensive expenditures for HVAC. So realistically, we feel that we could probably get the elementary school in particular to be more in line with the middle school as far as fresh air and still try to stay below a dollar per square foot. We even talked with Wes about maybe implementing some control strategies at the middle school to try to get that system tuned up and get closer to a dollar per square foot. Any questions about utility analysis? Not, we'll kind of go on to the findings. So elementary, go ahead. All right, so the elementary school is kind of where we focused, like Sterling said. You have a lot of HVAC systems that are reaching the end of their useful life. 51 rooftop units in total, the average age of them is 16 years, with some of them over 25 years old. The majority of them are still on R22, which is, as of last year, is, is no longer being produced or sold new. Any R22 that's going to be used today is going to have to be reclaimed. So as that supply starts to dwindle, service for these units can start to cost more and more as that refrigerant becomes less and less available. Kind of the whole thing that got us started, the poor indoor air quality across the elementary school. And then another item that we, that Wes kind of showed us was the failing roof system. I think at the high school and the elementary is the, I believe it's an armor light product. It's a metal roof. And it's, according to Wes, the seams have started to fail in numerous areas every year. And leaks have been a bigger and bigger headache for him. And then the last thing on there is outdated lighting technology. So the majority of the buildings that we walked were T8 fluorescent lights. Wes has said that he has been replacing with LED or retrofitting with LED. Is the fixtures or the bulbs begin to fail. One thing we like to do is kind of look at a holistic, try to get it all done at once, capitalize those savings to help pay for other projects. So this is just a look at the rooftop units, kind of to Sterling's point earlier. So the first picture and the third picture show units that don't have any outside air capability at all on the outside. There's no opening, no damper, no louver. So these units wouldn't be able to provide fresh air in their current state. The middle unit on the top has an outside air hood. The damper position could be closed or the controls for that unit might not be operating based on the CO2 readings we were seeing. Same thing with the lower right picture. That's another outside air hood that looks like it would probably have a manual damper in it or an internal controlled damper that is most likely not operating. And then that last unit on the bottom left, that's actually a powered economizer unit. So that unit should be providing probably the most fresh air out of all the units in that picture. But again, we weren't able to see that reflected in the air quality readings that we were noticing.
Right. Yep, that's a good point. That's a good picture to show the variety of units on there. And you can see some of the age. The one on the top left is a pretty new unit. But there again, it doesn't have any hood on it to provide outside air. So, okay.
And we see this more often than not, that a newer unit doesn't have outside air. If the original unit didn't have outside air, typically it gets replaced with a similar sized unit. If you try to add outside air to a space that didn't have outside air, the size of that unit is going to go up. So you're going to have to start looking at electrical requirements, whether you have the service at that location is large enough to handle that additional load. So it's not, it's not uncommon that newer units still don't have outside air capability. So as far as looking at a holistic project to improve the learning environment for the elementary school, we would look at retrofit or replacing the existing lighting systems with new LED systems, getting the light levels appropriate for classrooms or computer rooms. Replacing current packaged rooftop equipment with equivalent equipment that has outside air capabilities. So we would do a study to make sure that those electrical load characteristics were taken into account to make sure that the service that I mentioned before was adequate to handle the new load of outside air. And then the last thing would be, if you're going to look at replacing the rooftop equipment, it's a good time to start peeling off that old armor light metal roof system and put up a built up roofing system. Since you're going to be doing work on the roof, cutting, putting in new curbs for the units, it would just be a good time to look at the roof replacement as well.
And while you're at that picture there, that middle picture is a classroom where we did a HVAC upgrade and a lighting upgrade. And we also replaced the ceiling. And that, you know, it's a good time to ceiling, you know, in comparison to ceiling, an expensive item, but it does give you a much cleaner look for the classroom. And it's something to consider. All right. So we just have a couple of more slides. One is talk about the potential revenue sources. One is the energy savings. Brian mentioned the lighting upgrades. There are some savings there that'll pay. Obviously, there's CARES Act money. Typically, these things are sometimes funded through a lease or an energy loan. But those are just potential ways that projects like these can be funded. The next slide just has a little bit about the methodology we're proposing that you use a performance contract where we would be responsible for designing and building the solution. And that would guarantee no change orders and guaranteed performance. And typically, when we're talking about performance, we're talking about meeting your design criteria in terms of temperature, humidity and CO2 levels. I mean, ideally, the great thing about St. James, your middle school is performing very well. We think it probably can be more efficient with a lighting upgrade and tweaking the scheduling. But it, it does work as it's designed. And so you have a good example of, of where you want to go in terms of your building operation and just being prepared for, you know, the, our environment challenges that we're having, you know, from a health standpoint. And then the last, I think this is the last slide. What we would do next is we have not established any budgets. Robert Mott was our operations manager. Robert, why don't you just give a quick highlight of how we put together a budget plan and give them some my ideas about establishing priorities? We can't hear you. At least I can't. Is he muted?
He tried to unmute there.
All right, try it again. Uh-uh. Well, I'll do it. Okay, I'll do it. Well, really, so what we typically do, obviously, is come up with a prioritization of some of the items and pull, and pull a budget together just based on the number of units and the square footage. And then some of the goals that we're trying to achieve. So we could, you know, that would kind of be a next step is to kind of prepare a high level budget and allow the district and the board and the superintendent to establish some priorities. And, and then talk about the next steps from that point on. Robert will tell me what he was going to say later. All right. Any questions, Dr. Johnson or Wes or members of the board?
We, we, we don't have the updated. Can you send that presentation to us, Sterling? And then we'll get that to the board for them to be able to study.
Sure, sure. And I think Shannon has that, but I'll send that revised, a new one today.
Do you have that? Okay, okay. All right, thank you, Sterling. Well done. And this has definitely given us something to think about.
All right, well, thank you. And you guys have a great evening.
Yes, this is, that's not going to work.
All right, so next up, we have our aspiring admin team here. And we're excited to hear from you guys. We heard you have a presentation for us.
Do need for you to use the mic when you're speaking, so.
Will I be able to hear myself?
I'm sure.
I don't know how you did it. Do you, are we talking through a presentation or do you have it? Excellent, so we'll.
So guys, just kind of to introduce as they go here. This year, obviously, kind of our inaugural year of kicking off the aspiring program. We're pretty proud of what we've done this year. Obviously, there's been a lot of things that we wanted to do that we've not been able to do. Mainly for the fact of, one of the perks honestly is getting, getting these people opportunities to fill in for principals. Well, principals aren't going anywhere because it's year of COVID. So they've done a little bit of the grunt work and unfortunately not done what is the rewarding part. There's been a few opportunities, but it's like everything else, COVID. So I will let them kick it off. They've each got a couple of slides that they want to talk about.
Okay, excellent. So all this gets started. Well, first of all, I'm excited that this is an opportunity that we're offering to employees in our district. For me personally, I just kind of put together some common themes from different conversations that I've been able to have with building leaders. First thing is in our district, we have a strong belief system in knowing your why and what your purpose is for what you're doing and being able to articulate your why clearly to your staff members. So that was a common theme that I got from all the building principals when I got to work with them. Additionally, they would speak obviously about being transparent and being able to communicate with their staff. Obviously, that's a big takeaway too. And build relationships with everybody that you can. Everybody that I worked with constantly spoke about the need to be visible and just be boots on the ground in classrooms and with kids and with teachers. And also do what's best for kids. That leaves little to question if that's the intent. A reflection for me, I think it was really awesome. In my role, I get to work with these guys a lot anyway, but it was nice to just sit with them for a day and experience their daily activities and what that looks like. Also, we've had opportunities to not only collaborate with the building leaders, but also their leadership teams. And that consists, looks a little bit different in each building, but we've had an opportunity to participate in their meetings. And that's been a good experience also. The last thing that I had as a reflection was some extracurricular supervision. For me, that was a good opportunity just to be in the community and network with some parents and see kids in action. So that's, that was me.
I'm Mrs. Blakely, and this is my third year in district. I've really enjoyed my year this year being an aspiring administrator. Coming from Waynesville, I was part of their program as well. And so it's really interesting for me to be in a variety of different buildings and see the level at which our administrators in this district care about students and care about staff. And that's one thing that I commented on is, you know, I've been in the, I teach in the middle school. I've been in the high school, I've been in the elementary. And the level at which the administrators care about the students and then, and about their faculty. And then, you know, that passes down, the faculty then really genuinely cares about the students. So I wanted to commend our district on that. That's something I truly do appreciate. The responsibilities coming into it, I, you know, have a, a big picture about how the responsibilities are for an administrator. And those take some really broad shoulders to bear. And that was something that was really, that's really hit home with me a lot more now through seeing the whole COVID issue and just how, how our school district impacts the community. And so I just wanted to take an opportunity just to thank everyone for this opportunity. And thank you for creating this opportunity for us.
I'm Lisa Hartley. And boy, oh, boy, I can tell you one thing's for certain. A day in the life of a principal is anything but boring. I took notes, there's a lot going on. So great principals lead by example. Our principals are almost always the first ones to arrive and the last ones to leave. They squeeze in what seems to be 28 hours into 24 somehow. From preparing for bus evacuations early in the morning at the football field to supervising basketball games late at night, you can tell they love their jobs. They bring positive energy to their work every day. They keep smiles on their faces, under their mask, of course. And they handled adversity with grit and perseverance. Our great principals support their teachers at every turn. Our principals don't spend much time in their offices. And when they are there, their door is always open. They are really good listeners. They are in the hallways, at the bus stops, at the car lines, or wherever the action is. They pay attention to student achievement levels and they spend a lot of time in classrooms. Great principals make it all about the kids. Principals always make it about the kids. That's why we're here. They know their students' names, their stories, their strengths and their weaknesses. They make home visits to ensure that their students are successful. We have great principals here at STJ. And one day, I hope to become one of them. And give my students the resources and attention that they need and inspire them to be more than they think they can be. I'm thankful for the opportunity. I've had to be an aspiring admin this year. It's been a great learning experience.
I wish I could have went before her. I'm not quite. I'm not, I'm not that poetic. A lot of the activities we did were, they were all great. But the supervisions and job sharing, professional development, those are all things that I've, most of us have done before. So I was just going to talk about a few things that I did, that I experienced that were more beneficial to me than the rest. That didn't come out right, but you know what I'm trying to say. I had the opportunity to substitute for Mrs. Lepa at the middle school. When I got that phone call or an email, I don't remember which one it was. I'm like, well, I've done a lot at the alternative school. I filled in at the high school. I don't know much about the middle school. So I was a little out of my comfort zone. But when I walked in there, all the teachers were very nice. And it was just a good experience. I had the ability to supervise activities, handle discipline, sorry. And I got to participate in my first contact tracing event, which was really, really good. The biggest thing, I know I went in there with not much of a plan because I didn't know what to do. But my day was completely full. You know, I, from the time I got there till the time I left, I was always doing something. And one of the best things that I got was being in the classrooms. The next thing I was going to talk about was our leadership role, my leadership role in the virtual course creation. I don't know what's going on, I fucking want to choke. We started this last year. We created five courses to be used in our alternative school and for virtual courses in the future. Me and Victoria worked together on that. And we've created five so far. We have 10 more in the, in the making right now. And the reason I included that is because of my lead role in that was part of the. But, and the reason I included that is because of my lead role in that was part of the program, one of the requirements of the program. I'm gonna stop. I don't know what's going on.
Yeah, that's a good point. Um, I'm feeling faint, too. No. Again, thanks for coming up with this. This is something that I've wanted to be a part of um for a long time, so I'm glad we had the opportunity this year. And um I spent the day with Mr. West at the high school, and I learned that, you know, being a principal is a lot of things. So we spent part of the day um looking for a kiddo that had gone missing, um helping her mom, I mean, you know, playing around on Facebook, looking for clues about where she might be. Um, we were private investigators, we were custodians that day. Um, we, I, you know, it says delivery person, so we delivered things to somebody, I don't remember what it was, it was a while back, but, and just cheering people on and making them feel good about um their day, um spending time in the cafeteria while the kids are coming in and getting their food and making this kind of personal contacts with them was good. Um, reflections on the whole program. I enjoyed my extra duties time. I was nervous about it um at the beginning because I was unsure of what was expected of me, but I think somebody pointed out, it's a really good opportunity to make those communication, that contact and communicate with um parents and other members of the community, and so I really enjoyed that. Um, also, understanding my leadership style, so we have not officially done the book study yet, I know several of us have started making our way through the um the book from Gallup about understanding your leadership um style and taking this survey that was um like a million questions long, and if you waited like three seconds to pick and answer it, it'd turn you down. So anyway, I'm just learning about those, I was surprised by my top five, honestly, and I've spent some time um looking into those and understanding what they mean about me. Um, and then when I spent the day with Mrs. Lepper, she has created the middle school lifeline on Canvas um for her middle school teachers, and um I thought it was just a really neat tool to um, I think maybe Victoria mentioned transparency, but to um have that transparency with people, the expectations that are out there for them, um consistent information, um just a one-point um access for everybody, so, thank you.
So we've got five great people that have done a wonderful job so far this year. I think one of the best moments for me is uh in conversating with them, almost every single one of them at a different point when they weren't near each other, and after they'd done some supervision, they all had one common theme, and it was funny because about five years ago when I got into admin, it was the same thing that I said, they said, you know, I really like supervising road games. Not all the crazies are your crazies at that point. It's a little bit more relaxing, and it's just, it's just funny because I think everybody figures that out, so. Guys, I know you don't want to sit here all night, so as far as I'm concerned, if you want to, you can, but other than that, thank you guys for the work that you've done.
Thank you guys for coming in.
Thank you.
Next up, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next up, we have a summer school discussion, and it says Dr. Johnson is gonna discuss potential dates this year.
Yes, there's uh not a whole lot to discuss, other than that's our typical uh June uh summer school planning. Uh, so uh June first is actually, I believe it's a Tuesday, so uh that would be a four-day week, uh come back for two uh five-day weeks and then finish with another four-day week, which is typically we go eighteen days. Uh, one of the things that uh we need to be looking at, and we've been talking about uh the learning gap from uh COVID and and this learning loss uh because of COVID, and so the principals are discussing uh identifying the gaps and then working backwards on what uh summer school, an extra summer school might uh would look like for the students that we have identified as having some major issues, and we're we're really looking at, especially at the elementary with reading and writing, mathematics, uh that's, that's where if they get behind, it's really hard for them to catch back up, so uh we're looking at a potential, uh, you know, we're gonna focus on it in the regular summer school, but if we can really identify some of those students that we can hit uh hard in July, if that's something we can do, and we can use uh the CARES money, which we're gonna talk about a little bit further when we get to the strategic planning and superintendent's report, uh but that's, that's something that is one of the big uh hot topics on, yes, yes, we can do some facility things, we can do, you know, things that we see with with the buildings, but uh one of the big things that we are required to look at is learning loss, that's why we're here, um for kids to learn, and this this last year's been an extra challenge, so those are things we're looking at, so a bonus summer school possibly. So I'll have a a definitive, an official recommendation uh at the March board meeting.
We have our ag teachers, Mr. Davis and Mrs. McCord are here to talk about the possibility of leasing the property at Nelson Hart Park for the ag and FFA program.
Now, just real quick, that is something that's come up, uh Jim Fleming at the city uh has uh brought this up, that this is a possibility of leasing the the property there at Nelson Hart Park, was it very small, and you can see on, if you click the image there?
Hey, real quick, so he has adjusted that, he wants to include the arena as well. So it will be that plus the arena area. Yep, right there.
John, just jump in, do your thing.
Yeah, so real quick, this came up through the FFA supporters group, which I'm a part of that. Uh, the FFA supporters group wants a little bit better place for these kids to be able to host events and show their animals and do things like that. Uh, they were exploring the possibility of moving out of town, and so versus that, the city wanted to kind of step in and see if there wasn't something else that could come to fruition. Uh, I will tell you that the the lease that Jim sent over has a lot of issues in it that uh they are working through, so it's not quite there yet, but uh the goal is to eventually hopefully get there, and I'm gonna let Tim and Whit talk to you about what their goal is as far as why they want to do this.
Yeah, so I made some notes so I don't get sidetracked, because if that thing would have been planned, I got sidetracked. Uh, so like John said, we kind of got a conversation started with some individuals that came to us and said, after they saw it at the horse barn and kind of how well it worked outside, had a facility that was a little bit better designed, a little bit had more updates, um came to us and said, how can we make a future plan for making our our Grape and Fall Festival market sale plus anything else we do with the ag department and FA and the 4H chapters as well? Um, how how can we plan for that in the future? And so we kind of got talking with the city and John, and that's where we came up this, it was uh Jim Fleming that actually mentioned this, and I think the reason we've kind of got to where the barn condition is now is there's been a lot of change, ag teachers, uh city officials, and so no one knows whose job it is to really do what, to the building, to the grounds, who's in charge of improvement, you know, so having this lease not only does that, makes a plan for the future, tells us who's doing what and what needs to happen, um and kind of holds whoever's here after I'm done in thirty years, whoever whoever that is, um, you know, make sure that they keep their feet to the fire and, you know, and and city officials, too, I mean, you never know when it's gonna be Jim Fleming or Rick Rick's last day or uh whoever heads up the facilities there, so that's part of that. Anger. Emphasize that point. Okay, so some reasons, it just makes sense, and uh this kind of goes back to our to our school district's new mission statement, um this is the definition of community partnership, um, you know, that leads into academic excellence. Uh, I keep looking back there for that map, but uh this, the facilities there, not only the arena, but the buildings as well, will help um kind of foster community partnership through the Grape and Fall Festival, through the FA rodeo, but also through other academic events like uh career development events that we hope to host here and bring area kids here and district kids here uh to bring that money and, you know, that influence, and those kids get to see our buildings and be a part of our department here, just like, you know, a visiting basketball team would. So um we also get to build on some recent successes we've had, you know, we've had a couple of really good contest teams, um, you know, I just got word the other day that they're gonna let us compete, our grasslands, I haven't even told our grasslands team this, but uh the plan right now is for our grasslands team that won state last year to get to compete at nationals in twenty twenty-one because they didn't get to compete in twenty twenty, so.
That's awesome.
So that's, that's a really good thing. I hadn't even told Whitney that because we hadn't seen each other. So uh you guys are first ones to hear that. Uh, this also, this lease also allows for student-centered improvements. It won't be a city agenda, it won't be the supporters' agenda, it won't be the livestock committee of the Grape and Fall Festival's agenda, it will be student-centered improvements. Uh, that will help, you know, demonstrate that, demonstrate also to the community that and livestock buyers that we're reinvesting those funds that are donated, uh roughly five thousand dollars every year is donated from our communities to to improve our building. And uh the building, okay, great, uh the building, this half the building, I'll talk a little bit louder so the microphone can hear, this half the building right here, we think was originally built in the nineteen sixties. It has original wood posts that were probably eight inches wide at one point, and now they're four inches wide in some spots. Um, the second half that building uh was re- was built as a part of the Young Farmers in the two thousands, two thousand and four, I think, is what the date was, and there's been some moder- modifications and improvements, um but, you know, not maintaining the drainage, the simple fact of not maintaining the drainage, um has caused a lot of the posts to kind of rot out. So we just kind of want to get an improvement plan and also make sure who's responsible for what, so that way we can ensure that we don't cause any more erosion and kind of prevent that as well. John mentioned the arena, which is outlined up here, this spot right here. Uh, there's new pipe fencing that was donated by a um Greg, John, and uh services and stuff, so that's already been donated, brand-new uh facilities there that we would like to host the, continue to host the St. James FA rodeo, which brings our FA chapter about nine thousand dollars profit every year, so that allows us to not go to the community with so many fundraisers of, hey, can you help us do this or that? So um those, those are some of the reasons that this lease kind of just makes sense, and I have, I can answer questions or.
Biggest, biggest thing that stood out to me was you feel that you would be able to host events that you are currently traveling to or that our kids are traveling to. You think you could host regional events or even, you know, update or whatever you want to call them, just preliminaries to before you go to state and things like that, correct?
Yeah, so um this year's a little different, but.
Basically, this lease will help us use this, these facilities more than three days a year, which is for Grape and Fall Festival. Can kind of have a lease for these facilities and kind of do what we want with it, we can host, you know, contest teams, we can have 4H, we can use it for barn marking, we can use it, 4Hs can use it for anything, um but basically, we're actually putting it to use for any agricultural need that we see in our community, um that's why we think this lease is most important.
And host the contest is nice because as part of MOSA, MOSA six, you know, we still have to test our kids in some of our CTE areas, um so allowing to host that will, I won't have to take the the kids that, you know, don't want to be there to a bus, get on a bus at seven o'clock in the morning, go to Lynn, said, we can just take them here, and then as soon as they're done, I can kick them back to school. Um, and uh that way, when I'm not wasting their time or pulling them out of class for things that they don't need either.
Well, they have, so like when the, like the city, if they do the demolition derby or something like that, does that, will they still be allowed to use that access even though if it's ours?
So I kind of let John talk about that, but yeah.
So that's, that's included in the lease agreement that we have, uh that this, the chamber would still have the rights to use it during an event, but that event will be coordinated through the FFA to make sure it doesn't um collide with anything they're trying to do, so.
We're still working out the details on that lease agreement. It's right now, this is, this is a discussion topic, and so we'll have time to digest that and then come back with the official recommendation and approval at some point, uh March or April or so. But thank you guys for doing all this work, it's gonna hopefully benefit our kids, so.
Just a little side announcement, Saturday starts National FA Week, so uh you'll see us kind of doing a National FA stuff, and next Friday is our to-go breakfast this year, so make sure you stop by and get you some pancakes and sausage links before you go to work.
And I'd like to say that uh Monday, we're gonna highlight the FFA on the radio on the Morning Mayor Show, when I typically do the superintendent report, uh some of the students are gonna be joining me in promoting FFA Week.
Yep, and the city's gonna do a proclamation Wednesday morning sometime, someplace, so.
What day are the tractors coming to school?
Thursday.
Thursday?
Thursday, so, yeah.
May- maybe, maybe snowplow uh this year.
Yeah, we'll make sure we put a snowplow up front.
Thank you, guys, for taking the time to come in and present. Thank you. Now we're to discussion about the Misha coaching stipends.
Yes, uh so last year, uh Greg Harland presented a very detailed possible adjustment to the coaching stipend, something that we have uh considered for a while to, we do have some issues with the way that we have paid our extra duty stipends over the years. Uh, right now, there isn't really uh any kind of uh reward for longevity in the district, uh and we would like to correct that, so anyone who is uh who is with the district for a long time and is a coach for a long time, this is any Misha, which would include, you know, band and choir and things like that, uh long, we would like to reward longevity in the district and uh same sport head coaching experience, uh not just from our district, but any, so we want to encourage a way that we can attract coaches that have head coaching experience and success through the recruitment process, uh so that they don't start on year, on year one. Uh, someone that has a lot of great experience, we want them to start where they're at on head coaching, you can track that, so we're working on that, this is just a discussion topic, we're gonna have something already recommended for a updated coaching payment schedule next month. Uh, so the other thing is, is we would like to correct some things in the way that's work, it works right now, is that right now, we have a certain amount of money that is tied to that stipend, and it just keeps growing no matter the experience. So we could have somebody that's coached for twenty-five years, and then they retire, and then the replacement comes in with no experience, maybe no knowledge, and they get more because of the way that it's designed. And so what we'd like to do is uh for, if you don't have experience, you're gonna go start back kind at the, at the, at the top, and you have to work your way down and be rewarded for that longevity. So we're trying to correct something that needed to be corrected along, for a long time. Uh, the thing, the caveat is as we do this correction, no coach is gonna make less money, so if anyone is being, based on this new schedule, being overpaid, uh they're just gonna stay at that same level until they catch up, and then when they catch up, then they start moving. And so I'll be able to explain that when we have the final schedule uh next month, but we, we, we thought we was gonna have it ready tonight, but there was numbers that weren't matching up, and so we, we need one more month to get this corrected, and it's gonna be, this is, I think the coaches are really gonna appreciate this because it's gonna reward them, and at the same time, when they retire, the next, the person who takes their spot doesn't automatically just get more. So uh it's the right way of doing business, and we've, we've talked to a lot of other districts and got their schedules, and and we're trying to do what what we think is the appropriate thing to do, so just uh be ready for that, and I'm gonna get that to you before the board meeting in March, so you can study it and then be ready to uh consider approving that uh at the March, no later than April meeting, so, any questions on that?
Is a Misha, does Misha already have like a, a guideline to follow with it, or?
No, no guidance, Misha provides no guidance on that, it's all over the place with Misha.
That's what I kind of figured, but.
Yes.
Just, my two cents add to it, I've been to a couple of school districts in my day, uh coached at all of them except the last one where I got to see the budget stuff because I was the principal. This is the first school I've seen that did not have what we're talking about, so we, this is something we probably should have done a long time ago.
And, and, and from what we're looking at right now, we're able to correct this, and it's only gonna end up being a set, about a seven thousand dollar increase, which it's gonna get some of our coaches who should have been be, they should have been paid a little bit more all these years, a little bit more, and then some of the coaches who maybe were, there's a few of them a little overpaid, but they're just gonna stay where they're at for a while. So it's gonna be a slight increase, but it's not a drastic change.
Okay, up next, we need to discuss the board member vacancy, so after Carl's resignation, we requested anyone interested to submit a letter before February sixteenth, we had two. Um, what comes next is that we can either review, we can review the applications and we can interview, or we can appoint someone from just the application, um. And we need to discuss when we're going to do that. We can call a special board meeting or we can do it at our next scheduled board. So I'm looking for input and opinions on how we proceed.
I would like to, personally, I would like to wait until the next board meeting to appoint. And I would like to reopen the application process for the next two weeks because of the weather we've had for the last couple of weeks. Personally, I think with the, and I know Dr. Johnson was here most of the time, but I think, you know, the unavailability to turn in letters, I don't want that to be a reason somebody didn't get their stuff in.
It was open four weeks, is that correct?
We did have, you know, the snow day, so that I guess you could say two and a half, three weeks.
My only concern about that is we are coming right in after the filing for board. So people have known for a long time that there's been openings, one to run, which we're not going to have an election because of that. So I feel like if they actually really wanted to be on the board, they could have either filed as a candidate or they could have filed for this. So I, I think we need to get a board member quickly. We've got a lot of issues coming up with construction and hiring, obviously COVID. I would like to just accept whatever process we go through. I don't think, my personal opinion is I don't think we need to extend it any longer.
I, I actually agree with you, Barbara. I think that people have known for, I mean, and I know the weather sucks, which I agree with you about that, John. But I, I think you would, if they really wanted to, they would have got in on one of those days and done it. My, my personal opinion on the interview as an interviewee, whenever I got appointed, that, I think that was a good process. I mean, it gives every candidate a chance to say what they think, why they want to be on this thing. So it gives them a fair shake instead of us just saying, hey, we want somebody. So that's my opinion on that.
And I'm okay with the interviews. And I think Tim's right. You do get to see what people are saying. So I'm assuming then it would just be these two people that we would be interviewing, correct?
So, so you have options. There is no official time limit. However, making a decision quicker is, is something I think is important. You can make the appointment right now. Or you can wait to do a spec, like Tim says, go ahead and do the interview process and then make it that night. So it's, it's totally up to the board on how you want to handle this.
I personally would rather do it before the next board meeting, like at 5:30, bring them in, interview them. We have 30 minutes there, then we can appoint and swear in at the next board meeting.
So.
I can't see Shalina, but.
Yeah, Shalina might have a comment to make.
Shalina, do you have an opinion on this? Thumbs up. She's happy.
So is, what I'm hearing from what Tina said, just on our, March 18th, I believe is our next board meeting. Maybe have instead of a six o'clock, we can have a, if we want to let the two, the two candidates, 5:30, you think you can do that in 30 minutes?
I think we can. They were about 15 minutes apiece last time we did it.
So five, 5:30 interviews?
We can do one for 15 if we need to.
Your, your only hangup I know that, that we have is.
How about you're in charge of the time limit? Okay, you got that? You got that?
I think your only hangup that we have is that John and I will both be gone. So, I mean, we could zoom in and still do it. I don't know if that would work.
I will be unavailable.
Unavailable. Okay.
Hey, hey, Tim.
Shalina, will you for sure be here on the 18th?
Recommend that they do a presentation.
I think that if something happens, one of the four of us who are going to be here can't be, then we can just postpone a week until they get back. We're going to have to anyway. We won't have a quorum for a board meeting.
Should we change the board meeting now since we know you two are going to be gone?
I think that, I think you, I think you should. We can make that announcement.
Yeah.
Move it up a Thursday?
Well, let me see.
We can just move, permanently move the meetings to Wednesdays right now.
Well, I was going to do that in April. So is Wednesday going to help your situation next month? Really?
You can make a motion. You can make a motion right now and do whatever you want. But that Wednesday, would, would that work for everybody?
Well, simmer down. I'm pulling up the calendar.
A Wednesday, 17th won't work for you?
Shalina.
So no day, all those day, okay.
How do your Wednesday nights look if we switch the board meetings to Wednesday night? Is that going to work with your schedule? I will, I was waiting till April to do it.
Okay, now, well, wait a minute. And I, I'm fine with Wednesday night. Is that going to interfere with people in the community, say, on a church night or something? Would that?
There's going to be something always. That, that's the, that is the typical reason many do not do it on Wednesday nights. So that's something you would possibly want to take into consideration and maybe you want to think about it a month before you make that official.
Well, you start at six, though. Don't most church services start at seven?
As far as students, we only recognize students a limited amount. I mean, the, the odds of your student being recognized every board meeting is very slim.
Right, right. Okay.
And it's usually 15 minutes at the beginning.
And that's, and it's only one, one Wednesday night a month. It's not every Wednesday night.
Right.
So.
And most services, I'm guessing, start maybe seven?
Most services start about, most, I would say six.
Oh, do they? Okay.
So, yeah. Some start at seven.
Throwing that out if that would be an issue. I'm happy with Wednesday nights.
We're going to pull the trigger before April? Can we do that right now?
You can do, yeah, you can do anything you want to do.
All right, wrap, you do your thing.
Recommendation.
Make a motion.
I make a motion that we officially move the board meetings to Wednesday, the third Wednesday of every month.
Starting with March 17th.
Starting in March on the 17th. I'll second it.
We have to update the webpage. You got to vote, I guess you got to vote for everything first.
Okay, so we have a recommend, or motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Shalina? Good? Aye. Okay. None opposed then? All right, so we are moving to the third Wednesday instead of the third Thursday of each month.
Does that mean then we will do our interviews on the 17th then?
The interviews on the 17th at 5:30?
Or should we do it a little earlier?
5:15.
5:15.
5:15?
In case we, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Okay.
5:15.
5:15. Okay. All right, so next up is the superintendent report. So I'm turning it over to you.
Thank you very much. And we'll start out with the financial report. And we'll just go through that real quickly. You've had a chance to look at those. As far as the revenues go, revenue percentage year, year-to-date realized is right on line where we were this time last year. Of course, there was a larger amount of money coming in with all the bond money. But I would like to say that the cares money coming in has really made the difference. We've, we've received the cares money and that's helped us keep up with the cuts that we've had to endure this, this year. And that should continue because we will be getting more cares money. And there's a possibility if what President Biden has, is going to, is proposing, that we'll even have more coming. So I'll talk about that here in second, in the strategic planning section. So as far as the expenditures go, we are in line as well. Obviously, we're spending, let's see, make sure I'm looking at the right thing. We're, we're, we're spending at a higher percentage, or we're, we are spending at a higher percentage than what we spent this time last year. But obviously, we have a lot of stuff going on. So if you have any questions, anything dealing with finance, the financial statement, anything going on with finance in general, just contact myself, contact Susan. We're always available to answer questions. And I always have notes. If you want to look at my notes anytime, on any of the codes, ask me a question and we'll have an answer for you at the board meeting on anything that is kind of standing out and maybe not making sense. So on the strategic, any, any questions on that, on financial report? Strategic planning. So CSEP, last year, we started the CSEP process. And then we got interrupted with COVID and we stopped the CSEP process. And then we finally finished the, we, we, we got back together in August. And we had fired up consulting with Kevin Daniel helped us out. And really, I thought he did a good job of making us own the, the plan. We created the plan. We discussed the plan. And we came up with something that we approved, that we presented to the board. The board approved it and we all, we're all talking it now. And it's, it's still, there's a lot of room for improvement. And, and obviously, there's some major distractions with this, with just running a school and living a life in the year of COVID. But we haven't lost sight of what the mission of our, of our school district is and why we're here. And it's, it's for student learning and doing good things for kids. Through all the distractions, we have to remember, there's, we're going to have to make updates from time to time. And that's, when we got this approved last year, we, with, it was with the understanding that every spring, we're going to revisit the CSEP. And if things aren't, if they're already outdated, we're going to make those changes and make those updates. And so with everything that's happened, we did, probably didn't properly plan for virtual instruction. We probably didn't properly plan for worrying about air quality in our buildings. Student learning loss, all these things, these new concepts, ideas. Teachers knowing how to teach virtually is one of the big things that we are going to have to focus on because virtual instruction is not going to go away. Even though we would like to get everything back to the way it was before, it's never going to go back. And especially immediately, it's not going to go back. So I made contact with Kevin Daniel. And we don't have to have him come back, but because it's such a big deal right now with all this cares money coming in, we, and we are, we've already been designated, we're going to, we, we've already received at the, last summer, we received like $700,000 and we've used that to help us get through all the, all the stresses of COVID. But we are, we have been approved for $2.5 million, which we should be receiving April or May. Now, there are some earmarks on where, how that money should be spent. And so what we need to do before we just say, we're just going to spend on anything we want to spend it on, we have to follow the rules and follow the eligibility uses for this money. And part of that is to address student learning loss. And so that's why I'm talking about the summer school, designing something that's going to work. We're going to have to get it approved. But there are things that, dealing with COVID with the, that's why we had Performance Services here presenting. Now, that's one company that, that we could consider. But they are presenting our needs. They came in and did our, our assessment. But we can go with whoever gives us the best deal with what we are needing. Now, they, they could go as high as $2.5 million to fix all the HVAC and the, anything that's energy efficiency.
Easily.
Easily. But we don't want to spend all of our money on air quality. It would be great to be able to do all the things that Wes would like to do, but that's not appropriate because we have many other needs and, and the needs that we have to focus on, on actual direct student learning, which is going to also how we can help teachers be more effective at teaching virtually. And just to be a school, have a better organizational process on, on the e-learning situation. So there's a lot of questions that are still out there about how this money can be spent. And so I have, we have a schedule with our leadership team, just in the central office right now, budget, budget side of things on March the 2nd, as Tim and I and Susan and Wes are going to be there on the facility side. We're going to talk about the money first. And then we're going to bring the principals. And then once we get kind of a understanding of how we can spend the money, then we're going to bring the, the leadership, the educational team together to see what, what our building needs are. And we're going to do that hopefully before the April board meeting. And then we're going to have it organized in such a way that we can present it to the board and the board can consider some, some ideas. And then we update, you take those ideas and we look at our CSEP and how can we update our CSEP to reflect where we want to be in the future? And that's what the whole goal of the CSEP is, is we keep it relevant to what our needs are as a district and things that we can really do and we need to be doing as, as a school district. So we focus on the kids and focus on doing good things and things that we can do. And at some point, we will have to bring, I think, the stakeholders, get our stakeholders together because we don't want to just say, hey, we, we got $2.5 million. Let's spend it any way we want to spend it. We need to put people in a room together, just like we did, we did when we, when we brought everybody together for the CSEP. And when we decide as a group of parents, students, business leaders, community people, board members, teachers, bring people together and we'll make a decision on how we want, how we should best spend that money. And after, when we start doing it and there's criticism, well, we, we brought people together and we did what we were supposed to do. And so I don't, I don't want to have that on, weight, that weight on me to make those decisions. I don't want Wes to have to make those decisions or just the principals or just the board members. We need to all work together as we update the CSEP. So we're working on trying to get prepared so that we can responsibly update the CSEP. So any questions about strategic planning? I would like to say that there is a document there for the board to be able to view. This is a very, this is a working draft. If you click on that, it's a five-year improvement, improvement plan. This is mostly facility stuff. And these are things that we have done and we created back 18, 19, 19, 20, and then present year 2021. These are things we would like to go ahead and do this year in the year 2021. We don't have a lot of that money yet, so that's why we're not saying we're going to spend a lot this year. And then if you move into 21, 22, that's when we're saying, hey, we have some money. We're going to have to pick on some, some of these things we can't do at all. We might have to take those roof, roof replacements, the ventilation, we might have to, to cut those in half and do something different there. There are different ideas on here, a lot of it dealing with the roofs and the HVAC. And then, but there are some other things on here that were part of our plan prior to COVID as well. And so that we can't tie all these things to COVID. Some of these things are just regular capital improvement projects. So there are, you know, there's some, there's some pretty good ideas on there that we definitely need to flesh out as, as a group on what we want to do. So just, we want to study that and then, and then come back together and, and make an official update to our plans for the future. And this is, these are immediate. And when you think, think about 22, 23, that's not very far from now. So there's definitely some ideas to be thrown around and I, I'm open to your suggestions and guidance all the way through this. So. Any questions on that? Okay, moving on. So when we start missing a lot of school, everybody all of a sudden wants to know, how's that going to impact us? Can we still go on our spring break? Can we do this and do that? So I'd like to commend Larry for leading, Larry and Karen are leading the calendar committee from last year that had, that we are living in this calendar committee, that's this calendar now from that awesome committee. So because they designed such a wonderful calendar, we don't have to make up these days. Now, if we miss 30 days, we're probably going to want to make up some days because that's what's best for kids. But right now, we're at a point where yes, we've missed a lot of days. But we did have a little, we were planning on, if we wouldn't have missed any days, we could have made an announcement in mid-March. Hey, we're going to be able to be out on May the 19th. Well, I'm not going to be making that announcement this year. More than likely, our last day of school is going to be May the 26th. And so, and we're, we're going to be fine. We put all the, the extra hours that we needed to in the calendar is a very responsible thing to do. And we're, we're fine right now. We're sitting pretty with no makeup days, so there's no threat to spring break or any other days that we had planned off. So everything is good. And we're, we're not planning on making up any days right now. I really feel like things are, next week, we're going to be back in school and we're going to get back, knock on wood, to a normal routine. We're going to have all our kids in the high school. And we're very excited about getting back to normal. I think this really is going to be the, the mark of things finally getting back to normal. Getting past, I'm not, would knocking here, getting past COVID, getting past the winter. And we're going to have a great spring. And it's going to be awesome to start a school year in August and, and, and have a normal start to a year with some modifications. Because there's always going to be virtual education. It's going to be here. And, but for the most part, I think our parents and our community are ready for regular, normal school to be back. So any questions on calendar? Okay.
We're going to have a great spring because we didn't have any spring last year. So this is going to be a good one.
It's going to be great. I don't know, what, what the groundhog say, though?
Well, six weeks, but he's blind, so.
All right, the facility and grounds update. Mr. DeLuca.
Stand up there or sit here?
Well, they need to hear you. The live, the live, the live stream.
So, got a few things to cover. Do you guys have any questions about the project as what, from earlier? Did Eric and Brandon from, did they answer all you guys' questions? Did Eric and Brandon from, did they answer all you guys' questions? Did you have any more? Just wanted to ask that question first.
I really think after this-
If, I mean, if we get done at a normal, good time, I'll just, I'm just gonna take them over there and let them take a look.
That'd be good.
I can answer their questions.
Okay. So, I seen on the thing, during this process of the improvement plan, I seen that it says, what does it say? I'm gonna do, give updates to that. So, I don't know if you guys want to go back to that document, or I'll just read it to you. In that document of what we're trying to do this year, it says, remove Tiger Cubs One and alternative school buildings and clean up the lots. So, that is the plan with-
I was gonna say, thank you.
So, our plan is to remove, I don't know what that looks like yet, I'm gonna, we'll try to sell the facilities as buildings. I, I, I don't know what that looks like. So, just wanted you to know that is the plan. And then convert the Mash House, which is what we probably need to figure out what we're gonna call it. That's, but anyway, convert the Mash House to office and storage for school nutrition.
I'd like to make a note on that, in talking with Linda, there are a lot of commodities that we're, we have to turn down, because we don't have storage space, and that's food to kids that we aren't getting. And she has been requesting this for several years now, that if she had more space, we could, we could plan better and get more commodities for kids. And so, we felt like this is the time to make this transition. We finally got the renovation project done, were able to actually get rid of the, you know, when, we went back and, and Wes was, was here when Joy was superintendent, and when they purchased that alternative school building, that was a five-year deal. And so, we're on year six right now and it's, it's, it's time to get rid of these inefficient-
Where is it now?
The alter, oh, the alternative school class itself?
So-
Oh, what, no, where are we putting kids? In, now with this, we will have space inside the high school.
And so, Ms. Prowitz, she will be moving into the renovated part of the building, and so that, that, her kitchen area, which is the hospitality area now, we can convert that area into the alternative school for those students now. You know, in, in the years past, the alternative school was a place that, you know, sometimes they, they wanted to have a separation. And in some cases, that might be true, but that alternative, the concept of it being a separated school is probably kind of an outdated model. So, we did speak with Mr. Metcalf about that and he said that that was actually very exciting to him, to be able to get back in the main building with the, and having a kitchen and, and being able to do those life skills in the main school, right there. So, it's all gonna work out, we, we did the things that we wanted to do for many, many years. And now, that, that's, that, those outbuildings were, that was just really a temporary fix. And we don't need to, we don't want that to be a permanent thing, we don't have to. And so, Wes and I have been talking about this for the last two, three years. And we feel like this is the time to jump on the opportunity to, to make those smart decisions, so.
So, after that, I just got, we have a lot of finishing stuff to do, and I don't mean finishing of the building, but I ordered some choir equipment this, you know, we have stuff to, to make our new facility what we need it to be as a school. And gotta clean, clean up the area where they were using for a late-in area with the Walmart trailers, we still have some furniture in there. I'm kind of waiting for the final bandroom to be done, because we have some athletic stuff from the old gym that's still in there. So, whenever Branco is done and out of here and the auditorium is ready to go, that'll, we have a lot of finishing from our end that are owner, owner provided, is how, with how the plans call that, there's things that need to be done there. So, that's gonna all be happening between now and hopefully summer. I can maybe check a lot of that off the list and be finished over there. And then, the Performance Services, their presentation. And all that's kind of, as you can tell, going in with my roof replacement stuff that I've been trying to get prices on. So, I've, I've got a, another, it's, it's another roofing company, they're, they're helping me break up how we need to attack fixing the high school roof. But I've kind of backed off from the elementary right now, because I want to, if we are going to do an HVAC replacement over there, we, it all needs to coalesce, you know, it needs to go together. So, I, I just am, I need answers as far as our improvement plan, you know, it all has to fall together. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hurry up and wait position, I'm gonna try to get us all the information we have, so we can make those decisions. So, that's where we're at on roofs and air quality. I will be asking for, you know, what, what are we doing? Because that's what we'll need to move forward with. So, just be, all these documents, just be thinking that we, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be like, hey, I need, how much, how much you want to spend? Where do you want to spend it? So. Walmart, well, Walmart trailers will be gone.
All the trailers come out.
Oh, for sure, I, I hope, I hope. And the reason I say that, I'm gonna have them ready to be removed, but I don't think Walmart's gonna want to drive in the fields anytime soon to get them out. So, I mean, I will have it ready as soon as I can get in there to get them, after bandroom can move and all that stuff. So, by August, they will, there, there, some stuff ended up in there that shouldn't have from the elementary, some extra furniture that I'm trying to now figure out what to do with. But anyway. So, yeah, that's, I think that's it. Do you guys have any questions? Thank you.
It's really exciting. It's been a long road to get to this point, but we're starting to now see some of the rewards of the patience. And it's, it's, yeah, it's been, it's taken longer to get to this point than we, what we wanted it to be, but it's really gonna be awesome when we get past all this. And we see the light at the end of the tunnel, so, exciting. Okay. Would like to say that we did try to save some money with the application company that we're using, Apply to Education. And the saving the money, sometimes, you know, it's like cereal, you can't, you can't buy the, the generic cereal, you can, it just tastes different. Well, we tried to save money and Apply to Education really is a complicated application process, so we are- Yeah.
I will firsthand say, as someone who had to fill it out last year, it's not good.
So, we're gonna switch over to Talent Ed, which is highly recommended by most districts. And Shannon has been working closely with the Talent Ed. It's, it's gonna be a little bit more money, but it's, it's part of our budget anyway to have this, this type of system for people to be able to apply for jobs. So, I think the people who apply for jobs will be very thankful for that, so.
People that apply to applications.
Yes. No, we did. I saw a building, I was thinking West DeLuca. Yeah, hey-
He's done with the building reports.
With the Performance Services thing that you'd be pulled over there, you gotta, you stop him. Sorry about that.
The bright side, well, it is not a good thing, but the fact we have not been in school, obviously, there's not as much to report on. Like always with the kind of the good things on this, I do want to acknowledge that our leading the Tiger Way winners from this previous month, so you guys can see all of them on there. Obviously, we appreciate everything that they do. As I just tried to pull small little nuggets from each building report, obviously, transition back to fully seated. I was hoping, when I put that on there, that I would have an update from this week of how that went. Obviously, it didn't happen, so hopefully next month, we can kind of-
We did have a half a day of students in the downstairs classrooms.
Yeah, so, we did have that, so, that's a plus, we're getting back to some normalcy. Spring state testing dates in all of our buildings, we're getting those established, they've got them locked in, I believe, in all the buildings. If not, they're very close to it. We have made something that I cannot personally be more proud of in all three of our buildings. Guys, the amount of work they have done this year to get those kids that have been on either hybrid and not doing what they're supposed to be doing, kids that have gone virtual and not doing what they're supposed to be doing, or some kids that just aren't coming, because they know this is the year they can get away with it. They've been boots on the ground, they've been sending certified mail, they have been tracking kids down, they've been calling families to the point they're like, just please leave me alone. But that's awesome, because we're getting kids back, we're getting kids caught up. About two months ago, there was, there was some concern with kids that had not attended enough, what do we do next year with them? But we have done and made great strides in that and really proud of all of them. We did get our final PD day of the year in last week. It was a very productive day. Moving forward, obviously, hopefully next year, things get back to more normalcy and we're able to bring people in and do more, more stuff with our staff. But I think this year, we had very productive days that hopefully provided relevant PD to our staff.
Does it appreciate some breakfasts?
That we have done over the years, and we actually didn't, we were getting ready to do that right when COVID hit us last year. We are not gonna do that, obviously, but we would like to do something different, or we could wait till things get back to normal, do that again. Shannon and I have been talking about just some new ideas of ways that we can show appreciation. So, hopefully, in the next few weeks, we can come up with something and let you guys know and then, and then do, if you have some ideas yourself, let us know. And finally, with MSBA, obviously, there's a lot, a lot of stuff going on with the current session, the General Assembly, the big topics, as they have been the last few years, expansion of charter schools, tax credit vouchers for private schools, and then Senate Bill fifty-five, everything going on with that. So, you should be getting legislative reports and keeping up with that. If there's anything major, you know, there's been some delays, because some of the legislators have had COVID, so they haven't gotten some things passed already that they've been, there's been a lot of talk about, a lot of anti-public school legislation going through that really hasn't happened yet, however, they feel that it's still gonna take place and those attacks are not gonna stop. So, if you have any questions about that, I can continue to just keep forwarding those legislative reports to you. So, that is it for superintendent report.
Okay, need a motion to adjourn to closed session.
I'll second.
Man, show of hands, all in favor? Shalina, you got your hand up? Hand up, okay, we're in closed session, we're gonna take a five-minute break.